Through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us, this day to rejoice in the land. We just ask you now, as we go into this meeting, for a peaceful meeting, and everything be done in accordance to your will. In your name we pray, amen. Let's go. Crane.
Here.
Robertson. Richardson. Sharp. And myself.
Problem here, uh, is this pertaining to the clerk?
You called the meeting.
No. I said, I called you, and you said, yeah, we need to have the meeting.
No, I told you, I said, you said that you were ready to do something, and I said, that's not the way that it's handled. You had to call the meeting, and you had to present to board what was going on, and your recommendation, I mean.
I'm turning it over to the board, y'all know what's going on.
The day-to-day running of the city.
Board, that's my deal. But guess what? We've got trouble down here, everybody knows about it. And what you're gonna do, it's y'all's. You hire and you fire. And that's what this meeting's all about, to get rid of her.
No, you called the meeting.
I did, I called the meeting. But I didn't say I'd get rid of her. You, you're the ones to get rid of her. I did not say that, no. I said, we got trouble down here. That's what I said.
No, he's not there, it's a mess, and y'all are right, she's not doing her job.
That's right, that's right.
She said, go ahead and get rid of her, and I says, no, that's not the way it works.
I didn't say that.
Done.
No, I didn't say get rid of her. I said, we gotta make change.
I said, that's not the way it works.
No.
You handle the day-to-day running of the city, and you had, you called this meeting?
You, you people are the ones want rid of her. You people are...
I'm gonna get rid of nobody.
Yes, you do too, yes.
I just want to be done.
What? Did you suspend her? No, she got sick. She's sick right now. I didn't do that, she's got, she's still sick. Well, you're listening to bad information.
Don, does a citizen, we have the right to know what she's doing and what she's not doing? Does a citizen, we have the right to know what she's doing and not doing?
Yeah. They wanna speak. What we've got here, we have a lady here, she has some mistakes. She made a lot of mistakes. And I did admit that, that, you know, we had to have a change. We didn't. I didn't wanna get rid of her. I wanted to call the local government, spend another thousand dollars, train her another two or three days, and you know what? It didn't happen. And then Brenda, I called her, and she said, well, it's my place to get rid of her. And it's not my place. I don't hire and I don't fire. I fired Marty Kaye, and I couldn't fire her, and we brought it to the board. And the board fires, and it's in their, it's in their interest to do what they gotta do. They fire, and they hire. And so Brenda, you can take that any way you want to. Y'all vote to get rid of her, that's your approval.
It has to be from a recommendation from you, Don, because you're the one that called this meeting.
That's right. I didn't call the meeting. I called you, and asked you what to do.
You said...
I said, we got problems down here.
I said, you have to go through it the proper way, and the proper way is for you to come and meet.
The proper way is for you to get rid of her.
And you make a recommendation to the board, and the board will deal with it.
Well, I'm not gonna recommend it. I'm gonna let y'all vote to get rid of her, keep her. But you're, I'm putting it in your, in your deal.
We hadn't even thought about a meeting, Don.
Yeah, you have, yes, you have, yes.
Don.
Beth, look here, Beth was wanting this, she told her that she could fire her. The board was behind her to fire her, she told me that a week ago.
I didn't come down here to argue with you. I came to tell you, you called me.
No, I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm gonna tell you that we got the meeting together, me and you. You admitted to a quick line, what's doing this?
Don, I was...
That is not true. No.
You, Don, you handle the day-to-day running of the city, and when you called me, I said, you got to do it the right way, because I'm not okay with it.
I tried to help them. Y'all didn't try to help them.
I didn't, I stayed away from the city hall. I didn't, if she called me and asked any questions, I answered every question.
What is your recommendation then? With, with her?
My recommendation is to go ahead and try to train her, and keep her, and see if we can get her straightened up or keep her.
The thing that I have been told is, local government came and went through the problems with her, but local government is not going to show her how to do a deposit. She's got a report that she gets, that tells her how much is general and how much is water.
Right.
And she can't get there.
Okay, well, you say we need to get rid of her.
No, I'm not saying that. That's just for you to tell us what you need.
Uh, we're not gonna fire her. Uh, we're gonna take, there's keeper.
Where did you call this meeting?
There's keeper, I think keeper, keeper then. I'm believing that.
Y'all gave her a book, and she's got a ninety-day probationary period, which the state can fire at any time, I know that. But if she got a ninety-day probationary period, and the state came and trained her one day, then it's many people y'all gonna hire and fire down here since the other two left. Then, uh, it just keeps costing money, costing money. So, why can't y'all take his recommendation and let somebody train her? And the woman in there, he's talking about, uh, what you heard, we heard that they're gonna hire her best friend, the one that stays here, that she's gonna be interviewed, alright? You all not think they're gonna be running back and forth and staying in each other's office? That girl complained that she was coming in there, where she couldn't do her work.
With the workload that's in there, you can't stay in somebody else's office. There's work that you will be doing every, every minute that you're here. I mean, there's a little bit of slack time, but there's not enough.
Well, just 'cause they can't, just 'cause that other lady don't like her, don't mean she should lose her job over it.
That's right, that's right, exactly.
She's up here in the air though, she don't know what she's doing from week to week. She don't know what...
She's got notes that tells her, line by line, what, how the procedure of doing it.
But why are y'all so against her? Why can't somebody try to help her? Y'all come up out here, y'all playing Christian, Christian music here, I'm thinking, why are they doing that for? And you talking about calling what she said, and he heard, sleeper over there, he heard, you know, he heard that, uh, that she was suspended, you know, that, y'all, y'all, y'all don't do the one you're supposed to do anyway. Y'all do not.
If you gonna decide to keep her though, you just need to keep her.
Train her.
To train her, and stop these meetings.
She has been trained.
One day, don't say, one day.
Local government came, local government came one day, because Donna, she's been for ninety days.
I know, but she had one day.
And she's got all of those notes, and Beth has been working with her, and she can work.
What is she not doing right?
She doesn't have the ability to do it here? Do you think she doesn't have the ability?
I haven't come down here, so I don't mind.
Why haven't I voted for her then?
My recommendation is what, whatever he does, then we'll deal with his recommendations.
Well, you're lying there.
I guess we're gonna, we're gonna keep her then.
There you go, there you go.
That's right.
They're not, they're not gonna make you spend a thou- thousand dollars out of our taxpayer money, they're not. Why would y'all not do that?
Who said we wouldn't? We already did.
We already did. We can't, they can't train her to do this work in here. They can train her about their computer system, and how the computer system work, and how it's supposed to work, but the local government don't know anything about this job in here. Nothing. They don't do, they don't, they don't do backfire. They don't, they don't, they don't collect water for you, they don't keep the, keep the money straight, they don't do any of it.
They have to find your mistakes.
You're a little bit wrong.
They know their system, they know their hardware, they know their software, but how you do is entirely up to you. Because it's, it's what you want to do. And if you got notes right, it's, you step right down.
Don, I kinda understand a little bit about what everybody's saying. I, I, I understand this girl. I'm pretty thick-skinned, you say whatever you want, man, I, it don't bother me, goes anywhere, and I trust. A lot of people can't work on the stress.
Exactly.
And I feel like that, it, it, from what I've just seen in the past four hundred, five months, Beth can make it as hard on you as she wants to.
She's the problem.
Yes, that's the one.
I'm not saying who's the problem, but I'm saying stress makes you where you can't be. You know, that, we all, it sends a lot of people to the hospitals, just on stress, but maybe if, 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 if we said, you know, no, no stress, we're not going in here stressed, and, you know, nobody's gonna tell the mayor what he's gonna do and what he ain't gonna do, and nobody's gonna tell the board members what they gonna do and what they ain't gonna do. If we all work together, if we all together, it'll straighten itself out.
Well, what's happened, Tony, there's been so much disagreement with these two people, that it's not, it's not fixable, it's gone too far.
Why?
Why are both of them?
Fire both of them, start again.
Y'all think that's easy to fire both of them? What we gonna do in this office?
Exactly.
I can't target somebody, you put me in there and they take the fact...
Y'all go ahead.
Pam is retired.
Ex-mayor, let the ex-mayor tell them.
Here's the thing, when you hire somebody and put them in there, they're not gonna know how to do the work unless they come from another municipal city, and been working there for a while. Somebody is gonna have to train them. And, but, and unusual, it's been the city municipal finance officer that does the training. So, there's a breakdown between the city municipal finance officer and this girl, and being trained right. Y'all need to see what that problem is and straighten that problem out.
We, we already know what the trouble is, Steve.
What's that?
Amster, you, you're years' notice that she was gonna retire, and you did not get anybody in that office to let her try to run.
But here, W C, they don't have anything to do with y'all firing anybody.
That's right.
Angela, Angela, Marty was in there doing a good job, was she not, Brenda?
I thought she was.
Okay, she was trained good enough to do a good job. So, somebody has got to train this person that goes in there. That's the problem.
Well, see, Beth, Beth had, what, nine or ten month, nine or ten weeks with doing the water department. So, she knows, she knows how to do it, she does real well on the deposit. The deposit seems to be what the problem is. But if you can't handle your deposit, that's, that's not good.
Somebody needs to picture how to do a deposit.
They, they have.
She was showing time and time again, Steve.
It's called stress. I'm gonna tell you. If you're gonna be on the stress, you may work.
Well, that's how I get stressed. It requires a lot, it requires a person that can multitask, answer the phone, wait on somebody, and, and, you know, that, that comes on pretty constantly. You know, it, it takes somebody that can multitask. And, you know, and this, this lady just, I don't know, seemed like she couldn't get it.
Well, I, what I don't understand is the other lady, I, I know she's got a lot on her trying to train this girl, and but I can tell you some instances where she put the, people had their water turned on, she put it in the drawer and left it for four months. I don't know. Okay, so I come down here and pay my taxes on Tuesday, I usually pay them on, it was anywhere, but I forgot. I came down here, there was a lady backing up, she said, ain't nobody in there, so I came back. And somebody came in to pay the water bill, and I was paying my taxes. She said, you're gonna have to come back, I can't do both. Well, why? Well, I'm taking in money, I take brooches and bows, I take all your money, write it down, and get it straight when, when I can, but you, you got a problem with your leadership. I mean, it's, it's an evident fact, that's the problem. I don't care how smart she is, a lot of times you have to let geniuses go. You know, it's just sad, but that's the way it is.
I know we got, I know the lady is having trouble. She's having trouble with the deposit. She, she can't get her money right, I understand that. But she's had very little training. When, when Beth took the recorder job, Pam come down here and helped her, and she was trying to help Jess. Well, Jess should've been with local government then, but they didn't want me to call local government. We're gonna take care of it, blah, 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 and then we got to where Jess and Beth couldn't get along. And Beth is a real quick person. She wants to do it now. I mean, right now, if it don't get done right now, she's upset, and she, she expected Jess to do like she does. Well, everyone, everybody's not a quick learner. And so what happened, it went, got deeper and deeper, she had some mistakes, and they couldn't change it, and it got worse. And I admit, she, she made mistakes, but I'm not gonna fire her, I'm not gonna... I'll admit we got mistakes down here, but that's up to y'all to do what you wanna do. If you wanna swap horses, that's the board, 'cause I don't hire and I don't fire.
That goes back to like Tony said, though, that stress can have a lot to do with that. I go, I go thirty-five years, I know a whole bunch of things.
Don, hey, that girl come from another outfit? She couldn't get along with nobody in that office, the way I understand it, right?
I don't know about that.
Yep. Now, if you roll it back a little bit, the girl you had in here, the Henson girl was starting to get rolling shit in the right direction. And, uh, the boys didn't use their common sense when they brought Beth in, because the wave started rolling, she, and three or four other people worked here, and Beth is the common denominator in the trouble. She didn't wanna have to go.
Well, the board, that's up to them. Y'all make this a deal. We're already interviewing the person. We know, we know she's, she's going, probably. That's up to your, your deal.
Why was the person interviewed before she was let go?
We're putting that in papers, we're gonna have to have a fish.
We interviewed her.
They hired our person, they made it work.
No, tell, 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 we did it, Don.
We interviewed her, we put the papers in.
Why, why is it mess? We're the citizens of this town. Don't say I've known y'all my life, we're the citizens of this town.
Don, calm me, and tell me.
But this is an internal personnel problem.
There we go.
It ain't got anything to do with your taxman or your taxpayer.
But our taxpayers pay themselves like you. And I am gonna stand up for him, and I'm gonna try to tell him the legal way, that's why I take junk tax and everything else, find out what I'm doing. You know, and then they take you and call you in on it too, because I need them.
Well, I believe in doing what's best for this town, and I know we got a lady in here that can run this office right now. And, uh, we can't afford to throw her out the door. Because I'm gonna tell you something, you can't get anybody just walking off the street and going doing this work down here. And that means everything goes behind, people can't get paid for nothing else.
Hey, let me ask you this, buddy. What if it gets too much for her? She don't get along with nobody else, then what you gonna do? It tells you, it tells you she's the problem, you should find somebody else, dude.
They've been, hey, Tony, they ain't been one lady she ain't been able to get along with. Now this one come along, and they, and they fell out.
I got one question.
One of y'all citizens out there wanna come down and do that for it?
What is your take?
No, but what he said, y'all have already interviewed somebody.
I'm reading it on the truck.
W C says, we're gonna put it in the paper. You're gonna put it in your paper to try to hide what you done wrong. You wasn't supposed to interview nobody until it was put in the paper. Not trying to be mean, but I know what I'm trying to do.
It don't even have to be put in the paper, because it's not, it's not a key position.
Why are you gonna put it in?
Just give somebody an opportunity to put in an application.
They already know who that is.
We gonna vote on this, right?
Who tells if Donna's calling her? Did that say that Donna suspended her, is what I wanna know.
Did you suspend her?
No, no. And y'all got that somewhere else. She, she got sick. And she's been sick every time, no suspension.
You didn't tell her to suspend her, Donna?
No, no. Or y'all get that.
I'm ready to get off the truck, and y'all in, you made.
New job. Come on, put your application in.
Is during this period of time, presenting the money, as far as you know, has she come up short on that draw?
Well, she's been short probably a couple times, but then, uh, a time or two, she was over, so.
Was there, was there water connected, collected?
It was the cash money.
I'm saying, yeah, okay, that's what I'm getting at. It was the cash money took on a deposit.
Right.
But then when we go back and look at the computer, there's no record of it. Is that true?
I don't know. You know more about than I do.
I was talking about a couple coins, like.
You're supposed to know.
No, no, I'm not a bookkeeper. Oh, no, by the way too, Beth had to block me out of the back door here, and I called W C about it, and he said, uh.
Don, y'all already got three, I'm just checking.
He worried about getting it, he's got a front office to, uh, door to their office out there, he's got a key to it. He can walk in that front door anytime he wants to.
That's right.
That's right. I come in the front door. Yes, ma'am, I do. Ain't part of the thing, you got to cut that door.
I got a question.
Let's, let's go ahead and bring it down.
How many times can an alderman walk out and not be punished or something? This is crazy, yeah.
Four years, he's just a fool.
Look here, I can tell you something. I'm the chief of police, I come down here and try to keep order. It's a shame when I drive around and answer calls all day, and I got a little old gun on my side, and a radio. But I come to a meeting with our citizens, I better put a taser on, all my big guns on, and afford me. We think we're all the people and try to get along, let's straighten that office out and go forward. And it's gonna take both of them people working together, I don't care who you get. They gotta work together, that divided office will never stand. So, you gotta get somebody, work together with each other. Now, is it gonna be the one she picks, or is it gonna be the one y'all pick? Now, which one's it gonna be? Put it in favor, get somebody that's gonna want the job, and, and go for it. And, you know, get off this stuff, and let's quit arguing.
Well, when you got the alderman, my alderman's arguing, it ain't just a sentence, it's, uh...
They need to set out, to discuss this in an orderly fashion, get it straightened out. But seem like to me, every time I turn around, this one's doing this, this one's doing this over here, that's silly. You're supposed to work together, people, or you never gonna get nothing done. And I said enough, I'll stay back out of it. You know what? It's getting to the point where the joke of the state. I understand.
I would say, I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to say one other thing. I'm sure that most of the people sitting out here, y'all up there, the mayor and the whole board, you realize that you all work for us, you're supposed to listen to us. If you look at the breakdown of powers in this, in how it works, the citizens are on top, then the mayor, then the alderman. And I, and I, and I speak for not just myself, but I'm sure I'm speaking for a lot of people. We're getting dang tired of you aldermen walking out of meetings like W C, slithering out the side door like Nancy Crane, or not showing up for whatever reason. But you work for us, you better start listening to us, and you better straighten up what's going on in this office. I'm not done, Nate, and you can talk while I'm done, Brenda. But I'm gonna tell you right now, this is a bunch of crap that we gotta sit here and listen to W C rant, or someone else just ignore us and walk out the side door and don't wanna address us. Y'all work for us, you're under us, remember that.
You said it wrong.
I said it wrong?
The employees work for Donna, and the board does the rest of it. They do the, the, uh, the, uh, budgets and, and, and the, uh...
Finances.
The finances and a set procedure. And everybody else works for Donna. And, you know, I just don't understand that, you know, I, I'm hearing all this in the street, and, and it's a common denominator who's, who's the problem. I don't care how smart she is. You're coming in my operation, and, and you're gonna run all my old hell off, and you can't do the job.
That's right.
You start talking about getting rid of people, I say, as long as you can do the job, buy them off. We'll try, me and you'll try to do it, but if you can't do what they do, don't complain about it. And evidently, she can't do both jobs.
We got another problem here too, that, that we've got a E E O C claim, but a former employee has not been filed with the insurance company in Tiptonville. And we got insurers to take care of this, to keep them having to pay out money out of the general fund.
Is this on your agenda for tonight?
No, we just got it there, couldn't take care of it, because you got a mediational dispute. I don't have to be on the agenda to know this, of what happened. I called the lady, and, uh, the insurance company, the agent has requested the information on the claim, so the attorney, their attorney can pick this up and use it on the case. Well, what happened, Fred, your, your, our lawyer, did not send the information up there to them, and we may have to pay it because the time's running out for them to cover this. And if we don't, if she gets a hundred thousand dollars, we'll have to pay it out of the city here.
So, will that come out of our general fund?
Yeah, we'll have to pay it out of the general fund, because we didn't turn it into the insurance company.
So, if, if, so let me, so what you're saying is, if, if we get sued by one of these former employees because this paperwork has not been turned in? And, okay, so the insurance attorneys are supposed to be handling that correctly, am I correct? And, and it did not get turned in for those, those attorneys to handle with the insurance, so now, we're gonna lose that privilege?
Well, we're, possibility, because the time limit's running out, and we should've already sent the paperwork.
So, then that money that the insurance would pay would come out of our general fund? That's a big problem.
Right, that's right.
To me, as a taxpayer, it's a big problem. Big problem. Why, why has it not been turned in? Why? I'm asking the board, why has the paperwork not been turned in? Why? Why are we gonna lose that, and all of us have to pay out a taxpayer's money, general fund? Why? I'm asking the board members, why? You've had months, why has it not been turned in? Where's the plan? Who has the paperwork?
Fred has the paperwork. The same attorney has the paperwork.
Why has it not been turned in to the insurance?
I know, if she were giving the papers, she'd have to run.
So, are y'all, are y'all okay with that? And with, with a general fund, our general fund, taxpayer's money paid for this lawsuit, are y'all okay with that?
Well, I'm here in two ways. I called Larry White, talked to him, and then Samantha, she talked, Larry had Samantha call me, and then I talked to Fred. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what...
What did Larry White say? Are we fixing to lose the coverage?
No. Larry told me that we'd have to go mediation. He told me, he said, you still need to get this thing filed, but, and you need to get it done ASAP.
How long do we have?
But again, what I, what we're getting from litigation, I mean, from, uh, the attorney on the litigation, is that if you go to litigation, that's one part, you still gotta go in front of a judge. As long as it's paperwork's filed before you go in front of the judge, you're covered. Now, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. And we don't, all this has been dumped in my lap today.
I mean, were the attorneys or the insurance not supposed to be covering that? So, if we have, if the insurance company is covering that, did you talk to him?
The city attorney is handling the case.
Why is he handling it, we have insurance?
Nobody's, I can't answer that, I'm not an attorney. All I'm, that's what I'm saying. I said, all this guy put it in our lap, say that over you showing what the insurance got, this, I said, the attorney. But you go to him, ask him, ask him, he's going, why? Anytime you got an issue, you're going to the attorney.
So, I mean, what did Mr. White say? So, what did Mr. White say when you talked to him? Or is, is the insurance company attorney's gonna handle these, these lawsuits?
That's not what he told me. He told me it need to be filed in order, if there's a judgment. If we were to lose the case and there was a judgment, by having to file, the insurance company could accept. Wouldn't anything come up about who the insurance company was going, with Larry, he never said a word about insurance company providing the attorney. It was just about whether or not we would have coverage if we were found to fall.
When y'all found out this lady was gonna do this, who opened up the letter and read it? Who knows?
But I don't understand, if we, if we have insurance coverage, why do we? If you have insurance coverage, they're supposed to provide you attorneys if you get sued.
We're not here to send the attorney.
Well, you can, you can hire your own.
Is that not true? Oh, yeah, because the, the attorney's gonna protect the insurance company.
Well, the lady up here that works for him says the time's running out. We're gonna be stuck. But obviously, it could be the time's running out and the insurance don't have to take.
So, so can somebody guarantee us as taxpayers, it's gonna get turned in this week? Can it, can it be guaranteed?
There's mediation scheduled for next week.
But they said the paperwork.
Mediation, but the paperwork has to be turned into the insurance company. Is it gonna get turned in this week? Is it gonna get turned in this week?
It does. They have to have the code.
Did we meet with the insurance man?
That was a different. That was a different.
We met with some lawyers. Okay, was that for us?
One we met with was, was another case. That's another lawsuit. It's a different lawsuit.
What about that?
Well, that's when I found out that the insurance company, when you have a claim, you don't take it to the city attorney. You take it to the insurance company first. And then the city attorney, they got their attorneys, they get together and do something one way or the other. That's coverage for us. And if the time runs out, well, then the city attorney takes it. If he loses the case, we out a hundred thousand dollars or whatever it is, and it may be more than that. And the, the, we gotta pay it out of the general fund. Now, that's the way it is.
The insurance company wants you to use your lawyer. They can come back and. There has been no dollar amount.
I know there has been.
It might not be five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars?
I barely hear five thousand, I hear a hundred thousand.
Somebody hit the.
Well, and I understand that, but even if you found out, can we have it turned in this week?
Look here, Fred knew about this when, when I just held a case. He knew the insurance company deal. Cause, uh, it was, I said about it, and I said, I took it to the insurance company. He knew about this a week or ten days ago, about this other case. So he should have. I didn't know that. I knew about this other, I, look here, I knew about this one. I didn't know this coming, I didn't know this case was coming up right now. But I do know about the second one, because I got, I took the paperwork up there.
Yeah, but I mean, the way this shit is brought out, it's making problems like a blooming issue.
All of y'all go down here anyway.
Dennis is awake.
I asked you this morning, to get the paperwork up there to her, to where we get the show going. It ain't got there yet.
But the insurance company wants you to use another lawyer. They want you.
They don't have to pay.
And if they lose, they gonna puke against you because you used your lawyer.
They're out, they, they paid before we paid you, bring them. They're out of the trap. We don't get no money.
Where's the paperwork now? Where's the paperwork at now?
I guess the lawyer, Fred Johnson, I guess.
So have we talked to him to find out if we can get that turned in?
He will talk to me.
Frankie, what did Fred say when you talked to him today?
He said that, cause I told him, I said, Fred, if we got mediation, the mediation is set up for Tuesday.
Yeah.
I said, in light of this, what we're being told, do we not get, need to get that, go ahead and get that turned in today? If not today, by Monday for sure, are, are they gonna put the mediation out? Where, where do we stand? He said, you still have the mediation. He said, whatever comes out of that, if you still do that, it can go away in front of the judge.
But Frankie, they got to have the claim first.
I understand that.
So has he got the claim file?
That's why I told him, when you call, my, the last word I had with him is that you need to call Samantha before closing for business to that. We need to have some resolution.
How long have we known that there's gonna be a lawsuit and with this paperwork should have been filed? How long have we known? I mean, how long?
I didn't even know that until they said it's gonna be the mediation next week. I didn't know anything about that.
I mean, we need to know what you did correctly, because we've got other lawsuits coming up.
Nobody keeps uniform?
No. I'm just near election.
You don't need to let, you need to stand up.
That's another reason why they listen here, they, they push aside.
They will have an election again and they can't be voted out.
I'm, I'm just, uh, all I'm trying to do, and, and I, I may have dropped the ball, but when I found out about this other case. That's when the lady told me that we need to, anytime that we have a lawsuit coming, we contact the insurance company first.
That's right.
I didn't know that at all, but I found out from this, not the first case, but the second one, when I took the paperwork up there. And then we met with the man the other day, the adjuster, he come here, took pictures and all this down here. And when he got done with it, he said, he was talking to Fred and they were, whatever they had done and they, you know, the lawyers on the other side. They're already preparing.
We don't need to lose a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, they're not gonna sue for five thousand. There would be, I don't know of anybody that's gonna go for five.
Well, see, if you're the mayor, Dawn, can you stand up and go get the paper and take it up there?
No, I can't, I can't. I'll have authority to do that.
You don't?
No.
Cause the law.
Well, I mean, the board.
I just said the lawyer won't talk to you. He won't talk, the mayor, he should be fired.
They have to do that.
He wants to be the lawyer though, cause he gonna get paid.
You down, you're on, then we're on the same page.
He wants to be the lawyer, cause he gonna get saved if he, we're loose.
Right.
I ain't nobody.
Yeah, nothing to do with.
All right, so I'm going back to the woman now, get it over with.
That bitch been there a long.
It's over. Hang the three now.
Oh, yeah, it ain't the three, so.
I can get a friend, though.